You ready to get?
I am.
Let's not wait any longer.
All right, so we're here for our fifth budget workshop. We're gonna look at the, before we look at our budget a little bit more, we've got to look at the tax rate before it's adopted on, before the budget is adopted on June 23rd. And so while you guys will not be adopting a tax rate this morning, what we need to do is hone in on what tax rate will be adopted or what we are looking to have adopted so that we can ensure that we use the proper rate in the public notice, the public, the notice of the public hearing for the budget and tax rate, which must be posted next week. And that tax rate is going to help us, or help me, build a budget for the next year for that purpose. So I want you to stop me at any point if you have questions. That way the information that we're looking at is on the screen and I'm not trying to fly through to find it, so please do. So we'll, we'll start with the funding and property taxes, historical. We'll then move on to the maintenance and operations tax rate, the interest and sinking rate, and then the bond debt structure. But first, we're gonna look at some highlights from HB2, which was signed by the governor last night. So the basic allotment was increased by $55, from $6,160 to $6,215. And that's the amount that we receive for our average daily attendance, which is currently at about $33.82 through the fifth, six weeks. HB2 also repealed the provision in HB3 that tied any increase to the basic allotment to compensation. So there is no requirement there any longer to increase compensation when that basic allotment increases. But they repealed that because the teacher retention allotment was added. And for districts with enrollments that are equal, with an enrollment of $5,000 or less, this means $4,000 to teachers with three or four years of experience and $8,000 for teachers with five or more years of experience. It also, something very important for us because we are, we are going to be growing, the bill includes a provision that districts whose enrollment crosses that 5,000 enrollment threshold will continue to receive that same allotment. So when it crosses over 5,000, we will continue to receive that allotment now. I'm not sure if that means just on those teachers that were already here or if it changes, but I do know that that was specifically in the bill. There's also a new allotment for support staff, which includes teachers that are not eligible for the teacher retention allotment, librarians, counselors, nurses, custodial staff, food service staff, bus drivers, basically anyone who's not an administrator or principal. So that is at $45. And then the, the allotment for small and mid-sized school districts was also adjusted. And for us, that's about, it increased about 20%, which is about $200,000. So we'll pick up about $200,000 there.
The staff allotment for $45, that is $45.
So based on?
What type?
Yeah. In a weird formula. It's not, which is why I didn't go into it. It's like our ADA, our WADA minus our ADA times, divided by our FSP. It's so crazy.
So we don't know how much one staff member would make?
Uh, the preliminary template I have, it's about, it's a little less than 200,000 total. So not enough to do a lot with.
For the whole district?
For the whole district. Yes, sir. And it's nothing specific for those people. It's just to help us give those additional people raises.
So how many of our teachers fall into three plus years?
I could have, I could go get my computer and run it real quick.
I mean, if you have any idea?
No.
I haven't not looked at that yet.
Yeah.
It's a lot, yeah.
It's probably, yeah, it's a lot. Let me go get my computer.
Because we have a lot even when we got to the 10, 12 years when we were looking at those steps, salary.
I can tell you that in the runs that I've seen, and they use like state data to come up with that, it was 1.5 million. A little less than, it was like 1.4 something. So it's a lot.
So we were waiting to announce any sort of salary increase, which we knew that we wanted to do. That was on, on our radar all along. We were waiting until we saw what happened, right? So now, nothing is tied to, if I understand this right, there's nothing holding us back, none of the money that we're receiving, none of the funding we're getting from this bill. We are not required to, one, pay that and then on top of, add, you know, 3%, 4% on top of that. Correct.
No, if, I mean, if we want to close the gap, I mean, so this helps us a little bit with surrounding districts because of our size, right? Because they're not getting as big of a bump.
Crossby's not gonna get as much. Everyone around us is bigger.
All the ones we compete against.
It's up Dayton, but we don't.
So we're getting a bigger bump.
People come here from Dayton.
Twice as much.
Twice as much.
Is Dayton, I think Dayton's over $55 allotment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a pass for them.
That's not coming out, none of that money is coming out of that, David.
No, sir. No, sir.
We know how they're gonna.
What we do not know is, what I do not know right now is how they expect that to be passed along. Like, is it to be built into the teacher pay scale? Or is it, you have the teacher pay scale and it's an asterisk additional amount? That's the piece that I don't know yet. Because this is only for two years. They, they call it permanent, but, I mean, it's every biennium. So, until they repeal it. But I don't know how they're gonna repeal it without replacing it with something else. There would be a right, I'm afraid.
It's one to five.
From teachers.
Real quick. Looks like about, was it 40%?
Yeah.
You mean that's a call?
We'll be going through this in two years. That will completely reverse in two years.
Yeah, I just don't, I agree, I don't think. I don't think there's a legislator out there that's gonna take it away.
Yeah.
They may change it.
They may change it.
Especially since in the last 10 years, they talked so much about retention and keeping teachers in the business and teachers are just leaving in droves. Like this at least keeps some teachers in the classroom because you do see teachers getting out of the classroom for various things. And it will also help the small districts because we're not, we're, we've got a little room before we're at 5,000.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on, there, we get a CTE allotment. But one thing that we have not received in the past is any funding for our JROTC students. So they have now included JROTC into the CTE allotment and we'll get additional funding for those guys. They've added a special ed allotment where they will pay us $1,000 for each initial evaluation that we do. That was calculated at approximately $150,000.
Is that just covered?
It depends on the, like, how much testing is in the package, right? When you do the request and the referral, it depends. Some of them, we have to contract out an LSSP and all that. That would be how it goes.
How much in club, how much in-house diag do we do?
We do a lot, yeah.
Now we have.
You know, wood cupunios, like those batteries, we do that in-house. But when you're looking at conducting an FBA or having to have a school psychologist, that's where we.
More specialists, specialty kind of stuff.
Let's see, they also, they adjusted the sped allotment as well. The last time that that sped allotment was updated was in 1993. Basically, the bill directs the commissioner to establish eight tiers of intensity of services and for that to begin in '26, '27. So there wasn't any direction on how that funding would be weighted. It just directed the commissioner to develop it. So we really don't have any information on that because he'll probably develop it over the next year for the following year.
I actually saw a video yesterday that they have to write the sped formula. They don't even have it yet. They have to create it.
An increase was made to the school safety allotment. It increases our student multiplier. Instead of $10 per student, we will get $20 per student. And then instead of $15,000 per campus, we'll get a little over $33,000 per campus. So that's a little bit of extra money. Early literacy intervention allotment, that is going to be $250 for enrolled student that receives reading intervention after failing two consecutive assessments that are also required under the bill.
They didn't say what assessments?
Not that I saw. Full day pre-K. It reallocates funds to districts operating the full day pre-K program. I haven't dug into that one yet, but I wanted to point that out. And then for the teacher incentive allotment, it increases the base for, for what is paid out. And then it also adds an additional designation called acknowledged for '26, '27. They also increased the number, and I, I don't know this number by heart, but it's like 35, they, when it first started, they said like 35% of your teachers should, should get this because it should be the best of the best of the best. My understanding is they've increased that 10% in this.
Well, because if you're gonna acknowledge someone, that's probably the extra 10%.
Exactly, so.
Do we know what other districts around us are, are doing this?
TIA? Oh, a lot of them.
I mean, I know there's, I know.
And a lot of them, like even Umla across the bridge, theirs, it depends. So like every district can pick what they want to write their allocation around. So theirs is only targeted schools that have performing concerns. So only the teachers that work at those campuses are eligible. You've got New Caney that has, their formula includes even attendance in it. And theirs is a growth, uh, growth assessment. They don't use STAR, they just use what, I wanna say it might be IREDDI, but whatever assessment they use. But nearby, almost every single, and you'll see, that's why they've been publishing because we're required by law to publicly recognize our designees. And I wanna say we hope we have the best recognition.
Just to give y'all a rough estimate, we have approximately 185 teachers with five or more years of experience. And then 41 that'll fall in the three to four range and about 25. These are rough numbers because I have to look at polls, total years of service. So it may have been paras or different things.
So only probably 25 that don't fall into this, getting a bump because of this.
Other than new teachers coming in too, depending on staff leaving in, yeah.
One of the things that we're looking at doing with the pay scale is getting that year zero to 60,000. So everybody will get some sort of, I mean, that's gonna be.
It's all of them. Do they start them?
It's total years of service.
I do not have that yet, sir. I've heard, I've heard saying both. But I've not heard anything that's sensitive last week.
I mean, is it?
I'm trying to let experts kind of dive in some of this.
If we give, I mean, if it's a stipend, like, and it's not added on to salaries, when we give, like, the first three, if we were to give them a 3%, that would throw our scale off, right?
It could, it could.
But kind of, it'd be kind of confusing.
I'll work to try to make it as little as possible.
Are they, I'll wait, I'll wait. I understand what he's saying, but I just don't see how that can, how it would be paid out as a stipend.
Oh, okay, so it's not, they're calling a stipend because when they approve a budget, they approve it over a biennium. So they're not talking in annual salaries. So they are calling it a stipend. I actually watched that, that meeting where they actually talked about that. It would actually be built into their salary. So they're calling it a stipend because they approved by biennium, but it's really in their salary and it will be TRS eligible.
Yeah, and they called it permanent. They called it a permanent deal.
Yeah, I think it'll be in this.
Yeah, if it's in pay, it will be charged.
Yeah, it will be in, yes, sir, it will be in the pay. But, but they called it a stipend because apparently they had to call it a stipend. Clear as mud, right? All right, property taxes. So now we're gonna move on into property taxes and review how those are allocated into our funds. I really won't go into this, but what I did wanna do is collect a lot of these slides into this one PowerPoint so that we could go back and refer to these things. MNO taxes go into the general fund. INS taxes go into our debt service fund to be able to repay that debt. Moving on to our certified estimates of taxable values that we received from the Harris Central appraisal district. We received those on April 30th. They calculated them on April 28th to show that we should increase about 7.1% in property values, which if, if that holds true, will compress us the maximum amount in the upcoming year on the MNO side. The final numbers could change based on any protests that are, that are submitted and any late filed exemption.
We're not like right on the line.
Applications.
We're not like right on the line.
Last I heard, it was like 4%?
Yeah.
The statewide for the compression?
Yeah, we're like, we're far enough off the line.
Yeah. I mean, they do give a range here that's plus or minus 5%, which could take us to 2%, but I kinda feel like that's not. Last year, the estimate they gave us was actually low.
As an appraiser, the vice is on the taxes, I can promise you they're not going down, huh?
We would love for it to.
I'm looking at three people sitting across from me that combined don't have the experience I do and they're telling me what my house is worth.
It's fun, isn't it?
So that 7, 1.1% is not all in an individual's home though. Although market values are increasing, it's, an individual's average taxable value of their home is only going to increase approximately 1.2%. And that's because of the new residences that are coming in is why that increased so much. One thing that I didn't talk about earlier, Senate Bill 4 was passed, which increases the homestead exemption from $100,000 to $140,000. I believe that has to go to voters in November, so just to throw another tinkle in all this. We're going to be adopting a tax rate based on, and a budget based on a $100,000 exemption. But there is, there is something in the law that would provide us with ASAH, which is the additional state aid for homestead exemption. And I know, David, you've looked into that a little bit. If, if y'all have any questions about ASAH, but supposedly it is going to replace the money that we're losing from that $40,000.
For your debt service.
For debt service.
Because you, you know, you've taken out loans based on value. So if you look at, if you, I think the next slide, she has a nice line graph. If you look at 2023, that was when we went from $40,000 to $100,000. And so you see what happened to your total assessed values. They still increased by 4% because you have a lot of commercial utility apartments. Rent houses obviously don't get homestead exemptions. And so we can run some projections. The worst part about this is there'll be an election in November, it's a tax constitutional election, it'll pass. And then you're counting on Harris County then re-sending tax bills to everybody.
It's gonna delay our collections for a month.
It could delay your collections, could delay getting in money to make that February payment. So your fund balance becomes even more valuable this year. But on a positive note, in 2023, with a $60,000 increase, your overall still grew about 4%. So I would project that with a $40,000 increase, you'll still grow. You know, I mean, but, but there'll be some losses there that are difficult to project because Harris County doesn't provide us the kind of information. We kind of created a formula to give people ideas, but I can't get that data from, you know, fighting them in protest. They just don't get that granular with us. So you could see some losses, but I still think that middle number that they've given you, the plus or minus, I think that middle number is still a good number for you.
All right, so 10-year taxable values we just talked about. There's that 7.1%. And even with the multiple homestead exemption increases that we've had, it has still consistently increased over, over the last 10 years. And then lastly, with the property tax, here's our tax rate history. This year, we have a tax rate of 1.0737. That increase was 11.981 cents for INS, which was just below the 12 cents that we communicated to taxpayers. And then an increase of one penny in the MNO side for the disaster penny that was adopted by the board. All right, so let's look at the MNO pages. So again, we've gone over these slides over the, over the last several budget workshops. There's a tier one and a tier two in the formula from the state. Tier one is where the compression starts. The state tells us how much, you know, what our tax rate is going to be. They don't do that until August the 5th, however. But we can, we can kind of guess. We know that the 7% is over the 4%. We know what the maximum, that the lowest that any district could be, and that's gonna be .5909. So I estimate that we're going to be at the .5909. And what's interesting about that is we started at a dollar and they have compressed it that, that far, which is basically just, they shifted the funding from the local governments to the state governments. So the compressed rate this year was .6169 and then we estimate next year will be .590. Tier two is where we start getting into the pennies. They're called the enrichment rate and they provide additional funding from the state. Golden pennies are worth more than the copper pennies. And the first five can be board adopted. So everyone takes those first five pennies. The next 12 must be taken out to be voter-adopted at a voter approval tax rate election or they can be adopted through a disaster declaration for only one year. With the, I'm skipping that one real quick. With the voter approval tax rate election, those, once they, once you retain, so the board would adopt the rate, it would go to the voters for approval and then that is the rate that can be adopted from here to eternity until something in the law changes that says it can't be. With the disaster declaration, you can adopt a higher tax rate, which is what we did this past year for one year only, following a disaster to help cover costs. It does allow the district to bring in more property tax revenue without holding a tax rate exception. And last year, the board adopted one of those 12 pennies. So now I wanna go back to those pennies real quick. The guarantee yield for penny, I've got here that HB2 signed by the governor. Even though those golden and copper pennies existed before, one of the ways that, and I may be saying this wrong, but one of the ways that they increased funding in HB2 was by freezing these amounts. So 129.52 is actually what it is this year. It was anticipated to go up in the 130 range. So if you look at a prior board meeting, you're gonna see that that says 130, I don't have the exact number in my head. It's gonna be a little over $130 because they increased each year. Instead, they have held that amount. They've frozen it. But what that means is the district is guaranteed to yield $129.52 for each golden penny that is adopted. The local revenue, whether it's gold or copper, is the same at $193,412, but the state revenue is much larger. For all the golden pennies, the state would provide us approximately $432,000. With, where the copper pennies, about $28,000. So that is why those pennies are so important, especially the golden ones.
So in the disaster exception, aren't any of these pennies subject to recapture?
Not for us.
Okay.
Not for us. That's a very good question. Not for us. And do y'all understand the recapture? Okay. Does the, this, help me tell us?
The Robin Hood?
Yeah, so.
We're not one of those.
Yeah, so, so the state tells us what size the glass is. We fill it up with property taxes. The state fills up the rest. But if our property taxes overflow, we give that back to the state. We're all one of them. We're, we're fine.
In my former district, we would obviously keep the golden, but if we passed copper pennies, the state would get about 60% of everything we raised. So just, it was pointless for us to ask our taxpayers to tax themselves to get 60% back.
So did y'all just not adopt them?
We did the goldens. We did five, but we didn't.
They passed it and I know they just recaptured districts.
Had the voters adopted them in the past? And then it came to a point where?
We had an election at one point, it failed.
Because, I mean, there could be a point, I could see where you, a district could adopt all of those pennies and at some point it could become a recapture district if a lot of industry were to come in. But we're not there. So again, up to 12 pennies are available because we already have five of the 17. And a district would consider increasing these because they, they generate additional funding from the state. On the golden pennies, of course, the, the state has the largest burden there of the amount that the district gets. So on July 8th, 2024, we were affected by Hurricane Barrel, which was a category one hurricane. Over 2.7 million people in the house, or in the Houston area, lost power. And we were without power for a little over a week, which caused some mold growth in a few locations. In fact, the high school needed mold remediation. So the total hurricane cost to date from Barrel is $516,000. Of that, we have claimed with FEMA $364,000 and we have been reimbursed $273,000. So each of those things are in little categories and we're waiting on a couple of the categories to complete to be able to claim the rest of that money. So that's why we haven't claimed everything to date.
So we know that we can adopt these pennies because of the disaster declaration. Is there anything that says, you know, what are the reporting requirements for us? If we adopt the pennies, is there anything that says you have to match the amount of damage incurred?
Yes, so, no, no. Actually, what the statute says is there just has to be increased expenditures. It does not say that they have to be one to one, but in this, in this past legislative session, there were concerns, there were concerns from several that taxing entities are abusing the authority, the taxing authority that they have been given to levy taxes during events that didn't actually affect the taxing entity. So right now, even, there's nothing in statute that says they have to be one to one. There's nothing in statute that says that you can't generate more revenue. I can tell you that this past year, the only reporting requirements that we had, so TEA reached out to me and said, "Why did you adopt one more penny than, than you should be getting?" And so I had to let them know that it was a disaster penny, what it was for, send them the resolution that showed what the disaster was. And I also had to confirm with them if we had had a voter approval. And I also had to confirm with them if we had had a voter approval tax rate election, because in a year that you have a Vader, or a batter, I've heard it pronounced both ways, if it fails, you cannot go in and then adopt the disaster pennies. So I know that they are watching it, but there is nothing in statute that says it has to be one-to-one. And I did confirm that.
I don't know how you would, because of all the soft costs, I don't know how you would calculate that.
I know. And they never asked me for the cost.
Yeah.
And we went back and forth a few times.
Because this is just hard to talk right here.
Uh, yes.
The insurance increases, no, none of that stuff.
There's some labor in there from, from our maintenance staff.
Right, there's some labor in here.
But no administrative labor, no insurance.
Whatever penny that you got from the taxes inflation on rebuilding, we're not going to eat that every building.
But I did, I, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did want to bring that up, just so that y'all were aware that there are reporting requirements. That's what they are. They ask for a copy of the resolution indicating what disaster we're looking at, and, and they are watching it. I think they did put something in effect, and some legislation in effect for non-school districts, but not for school districts. So they haven't, they have not pulled us back from that. There's also some, some additional future costs that we may see of, from a disaster such as Hurricane Barrel. For example, we have several areas in the district that are prone to flooding. The high school parking lot is one of them. Falcon Ridge Elementary School Playground is another one. We're about to get started next, this month, with the hazard mitigation planning. And they could possibly be covered from a grant later on, after we develop the hazard mitigation plan, but they also might not. So there is also nothing in statute that says that the expenditures had to occur in that year. The increased expenditure, it, it, it created increased expenditures. Those expenditures don't have to happen in the same year. Does that make sense?
Have we started going, talking about the flood? Have you, have you started that process of getting that camera down there and all that stuff?
Um, so Dean was gonna, he, he wanted to go do, you remember, he was going to go do it himself. He told me he would let me know when he did, and I've not heard back from him. So I thought he was going to be here this morning, so I was just going to ask him. If he doesn't, then we'll end up getting one of our guys to do it. We probably will wait till July, though, for the new fiscal cycle and all of that. Fortunately, this only happens in May, so we've got time.
Don't say that.
On the same day in May.
But, but part of that hazard mitigation plan that, that we've been working on is, we're, we're trying to list some of these things, because then potentially, if we do find a bigger problem, we would potentially set ourselves up for some grant money to help resolve some of those problems. This is an ongoing problem that we know is happening now. So we're identifying that with our hazard mitigation plan, so therefore, we, allows us to go seek money to help fix these problems. So try to position ourselves in a couple of ways to address whatever concerns we may have.
All right, so now let's move into the interest and sinking rate. So I gave y'all the MNO rate earlier, the .6409, and we're, now we're going to talk a little bit about that INS rate. So one thing that we have upcoming is a possible sale in August for the rest of our 2023 bond. So I think I listed it here, it would be called a Series 2025 bond. Pending August sale, so David has helped, helped me, David and, and his coworker Jake have helped me develop different scenarios on what this would look like. Right now, based on what we know, we estimate that payment to be a little under $2.2 million. As it stands now, which would bring our debt service requirement next year to nine point, a little less than $9.3 million. This year, it was 8.9. So the reason that it is important to know this number is because that's how we back into the interest and sinking rate. When the voters go after the bond, they are approving the taxing authority to set that tax rate based on what that debt service requirement is for the year. So we, we start with what's required, and we back into it. Now, one thing, if you were to compare this to our audit, you're going to see that these numbers are a little bit different. They're probably anywhere between $5 and $1,500 different. The reason is because here I have, like, paying agent fees, arbitrage analysis fees, all these types of fees built in here, so that it's not this huge, we're not looking at 500 numbers on share. So if you were to hear that these aren't matching, that is mine. So now continuing on, from 2024, 2025 to next year, we then take that Asahi that we would be getting from the state. We also back out the estimated interest earnings, the estimated delinquent collections, because that is other revenue that we can, we can back out of that total debt service that we need. It's, it's revenue that we're already receiving, so we don't have to pass that burden on to the taxpayers. With our certified taxable property values, that means that we would need to set our rate next year for, at .372. However, that's at 100% collections. We generally collect closer to about 95%, which brought me to the .3968, which is the exact same number that it was this year. That would be a little bit more than what would be due with the $8 million after we collected all these other things. Is there anything you want to add?
No, well, I guess your, when you get your tax calculation worksheet from your assessor, they're going to plug in 100% collection rate. So you may hear from citizens and say, "Wait a minute, it says we can do it at 37%." But your history has been 95.9, 96, 96.1, 95.67, 94.53. So I mean, I think it's wise to plug in a 95% rate, but just know, your folks are going to pay attention to that worksheet that comes out that you'll publish. But just remember that, that assessor is, he's just doing real simple math. 100% of your, of your personal levy.
Do y'all have any questions about how this is calculated? Okay.
What do you, I have a question, kind of based on this, but what, what is your expectations for our next, let's say, 24 months to 30, to, let's say, two to five years of what's going to happen to our bonding capacity? Because we know we're going to have to have another bond coming up.
We ran those numbers a year and a half ago. I think we looked at like a potential 26 or 28 bond, and then a 30 bond. I'd have to go back, I'd have to pull those up. I don't recall those right offhand.
I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at raw.
But those, those capacity numbers that we had run for you were including an annual $2 million sale.
Right.
So, and I want to say, we showed capacity of like 220 or 30 million. That may have been some fairly aggressive AV growth, and that was considering that you would be able to go to 50 cents.
Right.
And that's always a, up to the voters, right? You know, but that's your, that's your max capacity.
But we can, we can look at that, again, especially.
I can have those numbers rerun.
Yeah, just the, the closer we get to that next need, I think, relooking at those numbers.
We have to be thinking about that.
We have, we, we need to start thinking about that. We know, we see our numbers in the elementary schools and what's going on, but.
And the timeline, the timeline that it takes.
We've, we've kind of been, the growth hasn't come like we thought. And then we kind of fall asleep, and then it moves, and we're not ready. I, I just don't want to find ourselves in that situation. Like, let's keep preparing like it's going to come. If it doesn't, we'll deal with it. But, but, but I, I just, if we can at least maybe update that.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that. All right, so now we have developed a tax rate, as is including the 2025 bond sale in August, which would bring our tax rate to 1.0377. So that is the tax rate that we are working with today. That is .6409 for MNO. That is one less disaster penny, and 2.6 cents in tax compression that we anticipate. So that one is 3.6 cents less. With the INS rate, we've left it the same at 3968. So overall, we're looking at a 3.6 cent reduction in our tax rate for our taxpayers. And what does that look like for them? So I'm, I'm showing here what our, this year's average market value is and taxable values, which were provided by HCAD, current tax rate, and then our market taxable values for next year. Again, knowing that this doesn't include the additional $40,000 reduction to these taxable values here. So right now, as is, we're looking at $55 savings for our taxpayers. An additional $40,000 would get them another approximately $400, $400 in savings for the upcoming year. All right, so now we're going to move on to bond debt restructure.
And just to follow up, I, I pulled that, we showed, we showed a 2026 bond capacity of 230 million.
That's the max.
That's the max, that's going to 50 cents. That's assuming, I'd say, some fairly aggressive AV growth. You know, the homestead exemption is going to slow that down, obviously. But those growth values were 8% to 10% a year, which, you know, by 2030 gets you to 4.1 billion on your assessed values. You were currently at 2.2. So that's saying it's going to double in six years, which is, what, 15%, 16% a year? So I, I think those need to be tempered back a little bit. But I can, I can get those rerun. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
All right, so now we're going to look at the bond structure, because we, we discussed what the preliminary tax rate is going to be, but we are in a very unique opportunity in this year. I think when David and I talked, I don't, I don't think you've seen this opportunity for another district before. And it is due to the fact that we have not sold that next bond, we haven't sold the last part of the bond, and we have the ability to structure that bond in a way to lower the INS rate for the upcoming year and adopt additional disaster pennies. So David is here today to help talk about that a little bit.
Ray's like, "Y'all made me sit my back to the door." The camera installed guys, it's fine.
You have this in your packet, so I only did a few years up here. I only did a few years on the screen for presentation purposes, but you actually have a packet in your, in your grade folder that has it all the way out through 2055. And this is, these are different ways that the 2025 bond sale could be structured, and how it would affect our tax rate. So currently, we are planning the second sale with the first payment due in February 2026, approximately $2.2 million. That's what, what I provided earlier and how we developed that tax rate. Couple of things I want to point out here, which is something that I think was out in the public about when we sell this bond, the tax rate is going to go up again, another 12 cents. Well, that's not going to happen, and the reason is because our taxable values are growing. And as additional homes come in, that burden, I guess you could say, it spreads out across all of the years. So as that grows, and as, as our, our financial advisors structure our debt in a way that it maintains pretty steady over the years, our tax rate is going to go down. So I wanted to point those two things out. Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Well, I just touched on it a couple of times, but also want to point out that when we, when we did the first sale, we set that first payment artificially higher, if you will. So if you notice, last year, on your current debt, we were right at 8.9 million. This year, we're projected to be at 7.1. So we set that first payment about $1.9 million higher, so that you would be at your maximum INS rate, right? And what that did, that allowed you to pay $1.9 million of future principal off, which at 5%, we're not at 5%, that's pretty much dollar-for-dollar interest and principal. So if I ran the numbers, you're saving about $1.6 million in future interest by making that bigger payment. We structured it that way, so then when we feathered in the second payment, that keeps your INS rate the same. If we didn't have the homestead exemption, I would predict that that INS rate could have actually been lower. But the idea on a two-sale is you don't want to go up, you know, 5 cents this year to make that first payment, and then, oh, this year, we're bumping it up again to, you know, because then that's when your tax rates come, I go, "Oh, wait a minute, you, you've raised our, our rate two years in a row, so go ahead and hit that maximum." And then that, and now the rest of the story, as Ginger talks, will be that gives you flexibility, because we haven't sold this next tranche. And that gives you, and again, you're in a very unique situation, because you're in the middle of a, of a two-sale process. Now you have the potential to look at disaster pennies, so that gives us some flexibility with how we structure, because we set that one artificially higher. We can go back there and revise and set this next one artificially lower, if you will, to meet whatever disaster pennies you guys decide.
This is what it would be just normally.
That's just, we just did a normal sale, level debt.
No disaster pennies, nothing.
Correct, that's correct.
And then it shows the 1.0377 again. Okay. The next four slides are going to be examples of how the debt could be structured for that sale in February 2024, or for that first payment in February 2026, how that payment can be lowered to lower the INS tax rate, which then allows the MNO tax rate to be increased. So with three disaster pennies, you're going to see, and, and these are all estimates, right? You're going to see that the INS rate dropped about three pennies. The MNO tax rate went up three pennies to leave the total tax rate still at 1.037. Six disaster pennies, lowering that first payment again. We lower the tax rate, three more cents. On the INS side, increase the MNO, another three cents, still at 1.039. So still below that $1.04. Same here with the nine and the 12. The difference with the 12 is, well, there are a couple of things. The first thing I'm going to mention, and then I'm going to let Dana take over. With the 12 pennies, you're going to see that the total tax rate actually jumps up to 1.05. Even if, even if we take out that $58,000, I had to call him, I was like, "Can you even make a payment for $58,000?" Apparently, you can. Even taking that out, I could not get it down to 1.037 or 1.0, I couldn't get it below 1.04.
And if I can check, there's a tipping point around 10 cents that, that just the math kind of, I hate to say doesn't work, but it doesn't work as well. And so, once you get to 12 cents, with that small of a payment, then we start considering, okay, should we just sell this thing in December, put our payment off a full year? Because the 58 cents, $58,000 doesn't really scratch the itch in the formula to get your tax rate where it needs to be. And I know this is a little bit of kind of how the sausage is made, but then you run the risk of paying what's called capitalized interest, because it's, it's sitting there without a payment, a substantial payment long enough that you're paying on interest, you're paying interest on interest? Now, the reason I said you save so much interest on that first year is that does offset a little, it's, it's nowhere near 1.6 or 7 million, but capitalized interest is just kind of one of the, that'll come up. I mean, you'll hear that, that'll get thrown back at you. Probably between 9 and 10 cents, when we're making close to $300,000 payment, that, that pretty much covers that, or that, that's a nice chunk of that interest. Now, you could say, all right, well, if we do our cash flow on our bond budget, we don't really run out of current funds till end of March, April, so a December sale works. But Ginger also pointed out, you're getting available state aid for homestead exemptions, so, and that, so again, the unique place of where you are, we're right in the middle of the biennium. And so if we can make a payment in this biennium, then these, this bond that we're selling in August becomes eligible for state aid for homestead exemption. If you go back and look at that calculation on your $8.8 million debt payment, you're getting about $800,000, so it's 8.5% or so. So by not selling in August and not making a substantial payment... So by not selling in August and not making a substantial payment in this biennium, you could miss out on 160, 180,000 per year for the next biennium on this particular bond sale. So it's, where I, you know, I was saying the other day, that kind of six to nine is, is pretty comfortable. 10 is probably the top of the comfort level. When you get to 12, it just changes how we look at our next sale and whether or not you become eligible for state aid. And I, you know.
And it's higher than it would be traditionally, the tax rate would be?
Yeah. And again, it just, it just upsets the formulas a little bit, if that makes sense.
12 doesn't work as nicely.
Yeah. It's not as.
Nine, but nine does.
Yes.
Nine is a very comfortable number. So.
Can we go back? Is that 12 to 12?
Nine.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify, you're saying that with that lower payment there, because here, we've already made significant gains by paying higher in 2025, right? So with this first payment here being at 275,000, we're not looking at then incurring that interest from, you know, if we were to make a higher payment, we made a lower one, are we paying more interest because of this lower amount?
You will. It, it won't come near to offset that 1.6 million that you saved in the first sale.
You'll still make it have a savings.
Yes, you'll still, oh, yeah, you'll have a, I, I didn't run those. This could cost you a couple hundred thousand in extra interest over the 30 years. But at 10 years, this becomes callable, and then, and we're in an extremely high interest rate for bonds right now in today's day and age. We're going to refinance that. So even though I, I know we have to think about the 30-year look at it, you know, we hope in 10 years, we're knocking off a point or a point and a quarter on your interest rate, that there's no crystal ball. But yes, so, so by making a lower payment now, we're pushing some of that out, some of, you know, some, uh, principal out, because you're not, because this will be an interest-only out.
Take me down the road waiting for a better opportunity.
That's correct. Because this is, this will be an interest, a partial interest-only payment.
That's basically what homeowners are doing.
I know 2% after 10 years.
Now, the first eight pennies are golden, right?
Yes, sir. And we have five.
So we have five already taken. When she says nine, is that nine counting or five?
It's nine additional.
Nine additional plus the five.
So 14 pennies total. And let me, right here. So this right here is the five, the five pennies that we already have. So no additional pennies. And there's our MNO rate of .6409. This red line here, everything above this line is going to be golden. Everything below this line is going to be copper. So this is the five cents that the board already would adopt, and then this is, this is the rest of it. And the revenue that I estimate that it will generate.
Okay. So now, just jumping ahead a little bit, can you go to the slide of the taxpayer impact?
Yes, ma'am. That one?
Yes. So this right here, we, we still, we could have the nine pennies, adopt nine additional, and our taxpayers would still not see the financial impact being placed on them. They're going to see a decrease in their taxes.
Yes, ma'am. And I actually did one more here, which again, is a lot of numbers, but trying to bring it all together. Here's the MNO that each one of these would garner. The MNO tax rate, INS tax rate. Then here's the total tax rate, the taxes that would be due, and then change from the prior year. So there would still be a savings. I mean, even with 12 pennies, there would be a savings, but there's a lot of other reasons to not do the 12 pennies.
Sure.
That change is based on that home price, correct?
Yes.
Because we've talked a lot about all along in our subcommittee meetings, wanting to ensure that whatever we do, that we are not placing the burden on our taxpayers, right? Everyone's feeling it. We have increasing cost of living. I mean, in, in any way you can think. And so anything that we can do on our end to try to ease that burden, obviously, is something that, that we take seriously. But in this situation, I'm, I'm still, I've said this in the last couple of meetings, so I'm going to say it real to you. I'm still just baffled by the fact that we can lower our tax rate, generate so much additional revenue, and wow, how is this possible?
Well, the word was bizarre. I was like, why would you tell David?
It was like, this is bizarre.
So he can say it too.
It's, it's the calculation with your AV. You know, obviously, your AV is going up. So you're dropping your rate. If you looked on a percentage, a percentage of how many pennies you're dropping.
And our AV is our taxable value.
Do AV, yes, I'm sorry, assessed values.
Assessed values.
So your, your values are growing at 7%. If you drop your rate a penny or two, that's not 7% of your total tax rate. So you're still getting additional money. And then, obviously, with the legislative session, the state didn't do everything they, that we wanted them to, but they kind of, I hate to say, kind of got a drag butt home run, you know, from the state. So you're getting some additional monies for things that you've already been spending on, you know, safety and things like that, special ed, special assessments. You've been, you've been, you've been eating those costs.
Right.
Teacher salaries, I don't, some districts aren't getting enough money from the state to cover the required teacher salaries. I think you guys are in pretty good shape there. So I mean, there's, there's several things that are coming into play here that are, that are helping.
And I think it'll get even warmer, sorry, even warmer because as they're building these homes, just because we don't get the kids, our values still go up because there's more homes paying into their taxes. And even if we don't get necessarily a kid from that house, we get their taxes.
Yeah, that's.
So that continues to grow, and grow, and grow, and grow, and grow.
And, and, and you are unique because you're just under that recapture line. So again, in some communities, you'll hear, well, it doesn't matter if new houses come in, if there's no kids, we won't get them. Well, you're unique there because you're still getting the, the benefit. Kids bring you double whamies. They also walk in with $6,000 in their backpack, I like to say. But with, with the development, even though, you know, your personal taxes are, you know, you may not have seen a 7% increase on your homestead, and with the home state exemption, that'll take care of some of that, with the new developments, that, that benefits you. So you, you are, you're in a, you're in a unique situation.
And I think that it's, it's really important that we take this opportunity seriously. I mean, we have not seen an increase in funding in years. We've asked, I mean, I can only speak for the last six months, right? We've asked y'all to cut in every area possible. I know you're already doing that. There, we have plenty of positions that haven't been refilled, that everyone is kind of making up for that work from the top, you know, from the bottom all the way to the top, that you are adding in, okay, we don't have anyone for it, we're going to make do with what we have, we're going to do the best we can here. We're trying to save money in this area. And we know that we have rising operational costs. We are looking to be competitive in our salaries for all of our staff. We, I mean, the district has been forthcoming about the financial challenges that, that we've faced and some of our debt obligations. To be in this position right now is unique. It is an opportunity. I think that it's, it's important that we take it seriously, that this is something that we strongly consider. And not tying it to additional positions or, or anything like that. That's important because it's going away, right? This is a one-year, you get this for one year, and then we're expected to be able to maintain.
It helps us protect our fund balance for another year and could possibly reduce the maintenance tax note. We're not going to know that until closer to time. We still have one more maintenance tax note to do. That, there's still a third one of three. But, you know, a lot can happen in this next year, and this only helps it.
I, I, I agree with a lot of what she's, she said. What scares me is the very last part, which, and I know we do budget backwards. That's a nice way to budget, you know, before we have all the information. I don't want to do a lot of guessing, but I, I do feel like we need to, if we're going to generate more revenue, we, we, we have to know why we're generating it and where we're generating it for. And so while I don't say, hey, we're going to go hire this specific position, I think that we do need to at least say, okay, we, we need it here, we need it here in more generality. So kind of in between what we're, I want to say, let's just not allocate it to anything and just see where we need it later. I don't want to do that. I know you're not saying that.
I mean, I say that like, in comparison to Asper funds, we're Asper funds, knew they were going away, and was this, we're going to use this for these positions, and then you're in a situation.
Let's be careful with it.
Sustainability is a big key piece of that. Whatever we do and whatever opportunity presents itself, that we take the time to really look at, is this something sustainable? Or is this something that down the road, we're going to be like, how are we going to make this work? And, and I know a priority of you all has been, how do we compensate our staff competitively? Well, this is an avenue for us to be able to protect our fund balance and commit to the priority that you guys have been, you know, talking about this whole season as we've been preparing the budget.
Well, it's actually, this whole thing, we've drained our fund balance because of the finances that we're in problems with. So I mean, all we're doing, I mean, is trying to assure a little part of what we lost.
And, and, and that's fine if that's what, I mean, I just wanted us to all be on the same page, like, hey, this is going to help with fund balance and, you know.
Well, and to continue, like, we're not getting, I told you what little amount that we're getting from the state for other salaries.
Right.
We're not getting enough for that. Not to mention that we have about 12% of benefits that we pay on top of that. So they're giving us money, but we still put forth 12% of our funds approximately in benefits, and it is going to help. This will help with that compensation that we're trying to make up for.
So with all this additional funding, this pass-through funding for, for staff from the state, is that 80% or that number still holding true, you know?
Oh, for our retention?
No, no, I'm talking about first, our overall budget.
Oh.
Payroll, payroll percentage.
Oh, our payroll budget.
Like, that's going to skew that big time.
Yeah. It's already skewed.
But what I'm saying is, is like, is there going to be a new norm?
We'll have to look at that. Some districts are at 85 to 90%.
Yeah. Like, we were, when we were high, when we were high, we were still kind of normal compared to others. It was just high for us. So that's steadily been going down. But that's definitely something we can look at this afternoon.
Yeah. And, and that's something we, we, you guys, if, if we want to operate at an 85% staff, that's totally fine. A lot of districts do that, but that means that we're going to have to look down the non-payroll side and cut it even more. And that's something that, can't count on students. When I develop the budget, I'm not counting on additional students. But if we don't get additional students, we're going to have to start pretty early at looking to trim that because this is one year.
Right.
And, and that does help us by knowing, you know, if we're going to have a higher staff ratio, we need to have a, a, a smaller non-staff ratio.
And make those pivots.
And that actually gives us a lot of direction. A lot of districts go 85 to 90%. I've seen that a lot more recently.
We were trying to work our way down to 90.
Yeah.
So we know that we need to today. Your goal today for us was that we had to establish a comfortability level. So what would we be, we're not voting today, but what are we willing to consider?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for, for saying that. Yes, we need to decide what, what we are willing to consider, what we are, what our objective is. When that gets posted in the paper, so Goose Creek, who's our tax planner, they help us with the treatment taxation notice that goes in the paper, or the public notice that goes in the paper, the treatment taxation, they are waiting for me so that they can get that created to get in the paper next week. Last year, what happened was, we didn't have the tax rate high enough. You can post it one time and post a tax rate in the paper and adopt less than that. You can adopt higher than that without publishing in the paper, which is what happened last year. So we want to, two things here. We need that rate, that objective that we're trying to get to, to both publish that in the paper so we only have to do it one time, and so that I can properly build the budget for you guys to adopt at June 23rd. Because there's a, there's a big difference there in what our revenue could look like.
So basically, the top of the mountain, what would be the, the highest point that needs to be posted? And then for direction, so that as she's running the models and getting the information, what's the comfortability within a range of pennies? And so it's like pulling of the boards, non-binding, but just getting a feel for what Ginger and her team need to be working on as far as guiding us more towards a definitive range.
I mean, for multiple reasons, I think that 12 is off the table from everything that we've heard. From my perspective, 12 is off the table, but I think that, yeah, that nine, we need to strongly consider nine, looking at the amount of revenue that we can generate, even from the difference of six to nine, and still, again, look at the taxpayer impact. I mean, that's a significant, to me, that, that's a significant amount of money that we're generating with no impact on the taxpayer. In fact, they're paying, or they're getting less, right? Or more?
So we're looking at, so it's three golden, right? We got three golden left to get.
Right.
So the remaining would be six copper.
They would give us.
So we're comfortable taking 12 off the table.
There's my, there's my hole.
12's gone.
Okay, 12's gone. We know we want to at least go for the three golden in our models that we've been.
For millions.
Okay. So then we know no additional pennies is gone, so we've got the bottom of the cup off. And so as Ginger's preparing the budget for you all, we're staying in the three to nine range.
So that's where I'm at. We need to.
So that would be posting in the paper because we have a range. That would be posting .7309 and .3663 because those are the highest of both of those.
Oh, yeah, you do have to break them.
You'd have to, we'd have to break them apart. That is going to be. It's going to show a height. Did you want to do that math? He's a mathematician. Excel ruined me. Last point. You threw a dart at him. 1.0972 will be posted in the paper. But this is why. If we're given a range of three to nine, and I have to post the highest of each, I don't post a to, I didn't say this, I don't post a total tax rate. I have to post these two separate.
The highest options would be.
And if either one of these is higher at adoption, then it has to be reposted.
What does six and nine look like?
Better?
Yeah, it's better.
Probably 106 is my guess, since that's a three cent difference.
What is it?
My guess is 106. 1.069, which is less than what it is this year.
But that would leave us at three being off the table, we'd be in a six to nine range.
Yeah. I would be bringing to you guys a budget of six cents and nine cents.
But in the paper, 106.
I'm comfortable at six to nine, but.
It's taken, it's, it's, I'm just, I'm going to play. I mean, when you calculated a minute ago, you, you said, hey, you know, we're all comfortable at three to nine, but we're, we're taking off the table of no additional pennies by posting it that way too, because the INS is much higher with no additional pennies. And so you're not posting that at all. So I'm just, I'm just talking that, I just want everybody to realize that we're taking that.
That you are adopting additional pennies no matter what by taking that off the table.
You need to mention, so the one thing that I want to make sure we, we understand too is, if September comes around and we say, we adopt a budget, assuming we're going to adopt six pennies, and September comes around and, you know, we're not adopting the pennies anymore, then the tax rate will automatically be reduced by what we had already built in.
By the one pennies.
Okay.
But that's already calculated in there.
But you may have also done a bond sale in August. So September, yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah. So you remember you mentioned that about like, if we had built in the six pennies and then. So you remember you mentioned that about like, if we had built in the six pennies and then we didn't adopt the six, then it would automatically be reduced by the six.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
I see what you're saying because they're going to structure the debt in a way that assumes that we are adopting nine or six. Now, he's probably good waiting until June 23rd to know which budget you adopt.
Sure.
But whatever budget he adopts, so let's say that we adopt the 9 cent, okay, which is a lower INS rate. Let's say we adopt the nine cent. He sells the, he sets up the debt structure to where it's, you're adopting nine cents, and then we come to September to adopt the tax rate and you adopt six cents. What's going to happen is that total tax rate, or that INS tax rate is gonna end up having to go up next year, which is going to increase the tax rate, which is what we don't wanna do.
Like I said, backwards.
So with, are you all, for the posting in the newspaper, are we comfortable with posting 106 as the max? And that would keep us between six and nine range? Or do we want it to still be the three, nine, and no, it's a bigger range?
Six, four, nine, give me six, seven, eight, nine?
We skip a few numbers.
I know, I don't. We should teach at the elementary.
We can see that there's a significant difference in revenue from 2.6 to 3.3, right? Like, from the six cents to the nine cents.
I'm actually gonna have better numbers, I'm gonna have a template, I was hoping by today. I was hoping by Monday, last Monday, this past Monday. Um, so those revenue amounts could even change a little bit. And I can, I can do a six, seven, eight, nine. It's just gonna be more that's gonna be.
No, I just. Throw that out.
Oh, in fact, you could even do half pennies.
No. Okay, so you've heard from a couple of us in terms of polling, I wanna make sure that everyone is comfortable.
How are you feeling? I, I say the six, I mean, the nine up to nine because you're gonna settle somewhere back from that. And if you post six, then the taxpayer's gonna expect less, so I say post nine and then hope for six.
It could be nine.
Well, it could be.
It could be nine.
Could be.
But what's posted, it'll, it creates nine, what's posted will actually be, and what gets adopted would be less because you're taking the two highest.
Yes.
So that it doesn't get reposted.
Unless we, yeah.
Cause we still have that amount, what it's gonna end up being, which was the 1.0377.
Is it posted as pennies in there? You posted as taking those pennies?
Oh, no, sir.
No, just the right.
It just, it just.
The problem is, is that you don't want to, you don't wanna pigeonhole. We could all sit here today and go, we're good nine, 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 and post just the nine.
Right.
You know, and then we, we pigeonhole ourselves and.
Which we can anyways, cause we're not voting today anyways.
Right, no, but what I'm saying is, is that's why we're taking the highest of. And, uh, which allows, allows for.
Oh.
We know what we're doing and why we're doing it, but, but we understand what the narrative can be made out of that, and it's gonna be made, and we're gonna come in and adopt lower. We were never gonna adopt 12 cents last year, but that's what, how it was posted, right? And so we came in and did one penny and, you know.
But I, I do wanna, I don't think that we need to have a posting of something higher than we intend to adopt. That was part of the problem last year, right? So if we.
It's going to be though.
If, it doesn't have to be, it could be 109. I think that that should be the max that we are actually considering, there shouldn't be any confusion with it. It is truly, we were never gonna do the nine, I don't wanna come in and do that when we vote.
So, but if you go back to that, now we're off that slide. What, but.
Can you get back to it?
But here's the problem with that, and.
Aw, man.
And I'm gonna, if we get back, and I think this is what they were talking about.
Okay, how about that?
That looks perfect. Okay, um, if we decide, okay, but nine is not the max INS. That's not the max INS. So even if we say we're gonna post the nine cents, if we come back and do six, then we posted incorrectly because we didn't post the max INS. That's why you have to post the INS from one line and the other from the other. So it's gonna look higher.
Correct.
It's gonna look higher, we're gonna post higher tax rate than we had planned.
The tax rate, right, but I was talking about the pennies. In terms of just adopting the pennies, when we're talking about that, about adopting nine.
So we're not posting that.
Right, but I mean, for, so that we're all on the same page.
Right.
If you are not strongly considering just nine pennies, then we.
So basically, just.
Posting nine.
You're talking about the M and O only then?
Yes, I'm only talking about adopting pennies, I'm not talking about the tax rate, we already know where we're sitting at.
So we know we don't wanna post the top M and O that's on that screen. We wanna post, we wanna post the nine penny M and O.
Correct.
All right, that's, that's what you're saying there.
Yes, and then you should, and everyone's on the same page. Are you actually, are you actually considering adopting the nine pennies? Because we don't wanna be in a situation where we are coming back saying, we were never gonna adopt the nine pennies. We don't wanna do that. So if we're strongly considering it, and that needs to be straightforward, yeah, we're.
But we have to decide, like, we're deciding on the M and O side there, like, nine's the top? We have to decide, is there gonna be some type of decision made in this room from internal pressure or external pressure? I don't care where it comes from, because we've seen both, right? That we fall back to three pennies, because it is, then we need to add that .3663 to it, and that needs to be the tax rate we post.
Well, she's gotta post the highest of each one, right?
Yes.
Well.
Within that range.
In that range.
But that's why we said we're not gonna post the no penny option because that is the highest rate. That's why.
If we don't post it, then with no penny, we can just do nothing and it falls back anyway.
And I would say where you're going with that is, by August, before you adopt your tax, before you vote to adopt your tax rate, we're gonna most likely set up this bond structure into a bond sale in August. And so if we assume that you're going nine cents and 30.6, you know, the plus nine cents, we're gonna set it up at 30.63 cents, so we're adding some interest costs by setting that up. And so then if you back up to six cents, we've.
Created.
We've created some additional interest down the road that we didn't have to do. And so, and I realize there are, there are bits of information you're gonna get over the next couple of months, whether internal, external, or just your head on the pillow at night.
Right.
And so I just, I just urge you to, and I, and I'm not, I don't, I don't make recommendations on the M and O side. I just wanna make sure that we're setting up your bond structure so that it's most efficient for you, for your taxpayers. Right, that we're not adding interest costs because we're not sure, if you will.
David, I don't wanna answer this, and I don't know if you do either. Is it possible to adopt a tax rate in August if we have the MCR?
No, we don't have the, we don't have certified values.
Yeah, for you guys who want it certified, you'd have to amend your budget. I mean, you could adopt a budget, but you might have to.
Well, we'll adopt the budget in two weeks, three weeks.
Yeah, yeah. Backwards.
Yeah, I mean, I guess Paris Kelly might get us new information in July, but I hide it down.
Thanks, they won't, with the possibility. No dragging.
Yeah, we won't get it until the last day of August.
It'll blow the minds of you.
So Ginger, do you have what you need to move forward?
Six to nine? Are we going? Are we going, are we going 3968 and 7309? Or are we going 36? Is anybody not comfortable doing at least three? Everybody's good with at least three.
Yeah.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have it posted in the paper with the .3663 and the .7309, which is gonna be 109. Or is anybody want more than three?
And that's gonna be the one.
Or does anybody not want?
That's the 1.09, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, as compared to this last year.
That's gonna show an increase.
It's gonna show a big.
I think we're gonna be in the same predicament that we were in last year.
We're gonna be in the same predicament.
I just think that the one, that's a big enough, a bigger increase than the six to nine, that'll put it at 106. Or, um, what does communication look like about that?
See, that's where I'm at, is that, this is just, I mean, your part of the problem is the community doesn't understand it anyway. So how do you? To me, it's our responsibility to at least make sure the message is out there. Whether they understand it or not is on them.
Yeah.
That's not, we don't have, if they wanna understand it, it's a workshop, come sit down, tell them.
We can talk aside their burden.
Let me, let me say this.
Raising our taxes, you know?
They voted us to do what's best for this district, and if they don't like it, they can vote us out.
Raise the microphone. And like, this covered.
I don't know better, but we have to do what's best.
Well, it just goes back to, we talked about what's the communication look like? A, is, can there, is there any communication that can be put out there?
We're gonna put this presentation out there.
And that's what I'm saying, so I mean, to me, as long as we're doing our due diligence and giving the community, you're right, they voted us in to do this, but it is still our responsibility to let them know what we're doing.
But I think.
Hold on, go ahead.
No, I was gonna let you, but I was just gonna say, is there anyone though that, cause we were talking about the six to nine, so we need to, we should shore that up. Is anyone wanting to do less than six or not comfortable with six? Because then we could eliminate the three, right? And, and that.
To me, I think the room is set that you're gonna take three regardless. So to me, if you're gonna take three regardless, you might as well just figure you're gonna, that's the three golden, you're gonna take at least one to two copper. So to me, three should be off the table. If you wanna get fancy, throw the five to nine up there and see what. But that's what I'm saying is, if we're truly gonna do what's best, then we.
I already showed you all two main numbers.
Yeah, we're six and nine.
The truth in taxation stuff.
That's a good number.
It's a need because, because you are.
But we still have to be.
Set you up.
Set you up for value.
Yeah, I think though, that's what they're gonna tie and we're gonna adopt lower.
From a communication standpoint, I think that if we put out, in this document that she showed you, the one that you put in the paper, um, if we put out there that it's gonna, it, the max rate is gonna be a dollar nine. They don't look at it as that's a possibility, they look at that's what it is. I think we're gonna have similar outrage this year that we did last year. Um, even though all the, they, you know, that's the best.
All the motivation's not there.
That's what we could have done, we didn't do, we know, the intent was never there. Um, I think that dollar nine causes outrage and we would need more support communication coming from this office. Um, I don't like to muddy the water too much with, here's what it could be, this is some, some numbers, and this is how you get it, this is how we get there, because it's hard to educate people on these things that are hard to understand for even people who do it all the time.
Right, this right here, super simple, and there is a way, I think, to communicate that you have to do the maximum of each, because we weren't voting today, so it's a maximum of each, but that the tax rate is 1.0372.
In all scenarios, you know.
Right, and that is, but, but for this.
But for posting proof.
It needed to be the maximum on each, right? That can be communicated.
Yeah, can't we proactively, like, I'm.
That's what I'm saying.
An informational video, what do you do with what we just.
It's easy to make, no, it's easy to make the graphic that has the little house on it.
I'm talking.
It has the value on it. Talking. That everybody can understand.
Video, talking, explaining. Now, oh my God, I see this, ah, it's almost like you're, like a teacher, you're thinking aloud through things, and then referencing like, oh, these are the scenarios being discussed. If you wanna dig into more, go to our website, we've got all the PowerPoints for all.
Cause we can, we can set out on those tax rates. We can blast out.
But if you can explain that out, as far as the posting is, the quick little, it doesn't have to be your face on it if you don't want that, right? But it could just be.
Look at the little triangle. No, it's an animated, no, it's what I'm talking about, it's an animated little video that explains, here's your little house, here's the value of it out.
She's right on the internet. Oh my gosh, that would be hilarious.
I think you need to force misunderstanding.
Well, and proactively, when you know when it's gonna be posted, why wait for the reaction? Be proactive and post.
We can get ahead of that from out.
Yes, but that's the thing is, when you talk to the people the last time we went through this, their biggest thing is they felt blindsided, they didn't understand. Once you talk to them, they're like, oh, okay, makes sense.
Yeah, they all said.
Yeah.
If we had known, if we had known the information earlier, they would have had a different.
It was a different situation last year.
It means taxes were being. It can't be more than 15 cents.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't have to be a big.
It's much different.
Right.
Your taxes were going up in any scenario.
Cause that INS was taking a big.
Right. So that's different.
Awesome. We just need to promote.
Six and nine?
The full.
Three and nine?
Six and nine.
I'm six, three to me is just all, it makes no sense.
Julie?
Six and nine.
That's a good range.
Nine.
Jared? Jared?
I don't, I, I.
You have an opinion.
I'm thinking. Where, where's, where's the significant, and I wanna talk about M and O real quick. Where's the significance to the M and O side of the budget that you're creating between three and nine? Like, the significant changes, like, like, I'm, you know how I am, Ginger, I'm like, tell me what you need. Do you need nine, do you need six? You, you know. I know what, I know what the answer is. Twenty-four.
What do I need? Let me count the ways.
It's, and I'm not saying that I'm at, I'm at three by any means, I just, I just, I do, I know I joke that I say it's backwards, but it's very backwards to me, and, and, and I've said it in meetings, we've asked this district to cut, 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 cut for three, two and a half, three years, and.
And we held this year, we held a lot this year.
Yeah, and so, um, there's, that, that's a big difference between three, six, and nine and the M and O side and what we can do and.
I mean, we're, we're looking right now at, um, with raises, very rough numbers here cause I don't have a template yet, right? Um, or I don't have a good template yet. We're looking at a possible deficit between three and five million.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
And, and based on? No additional pennies?
That's based on no additional pennies.
That's, that's, that is, that is, I got you.
Um.
Sorry, it was all such good news for a while.
They have already seen.
No, I know, it's just like.
That's why, that's why I said.
Y'all said three cents in my life.
Yeah.
Um.
I got you. I, I, that's, that's what I needed, that's what I wanted to know, that's the number I wanted to know.
That is why it's going to be very important, once we have a good template based on the legislation that was signed by sign. And the first month of school is incredibly imperative for what this next year is going to look like as we prepare for the next year. You ask me what I need.
No, I don't, I, I, you gave me the number I need.
Yeah.
I, I, I wanted to know what that deficit budget looked like at no additional pennies.
But I'm.
Cause I can go up there, I can look up there and do, you're, you're not gonna change your budget based on those additional pennies. Your budgeting, budget is just the deficit changes.
We didn't add, for non-payroll budgets, we didn't add anything, like, all of the departments have still been cut, like, from our original cut, we haven't added anything back. Um, campuses have been replenished, but their budgets are already so small that cutting them another 10% is not going to be that huge. Um, staffing, you know, how did we get here to begin with? And that was to prepare for the growth. So now that the homes are going up, we didn't want to start cutting staff for this upcoming year, and I think that's.
And you're also basing this on zero growth.
Yeah, and our class ratios are not, did not position us to cut. Like, we are not, we're averaging anywhere from 17 to 20 kids per class at elementary. That doesn't give you wiggle room to cut a position, so.
But we also didn't see the growth that we're.
That we would need to justify adding in our T E C.
Yes.
And there have been lots of decisions that have been made that, you know, the money wasn't gonna be allocated there because it didn't impact children, right, directly.
We protected anything that had to do with students and instruction, like, those, that really did not get touched at all.
But everything else.
Everything else is up for grabs.
Yeah, everything else. Yeah, everything else did, you know, it has been.
You got any recent updates in these neighborhoods over here? I've been in a couple of them, but
Um, well, but it's still
You never know what, you don't know what, you don't know what vouchers are gonna do to us anyway, so
Um, I'm not I'm not worried about that as much, I just, it's just that we continue to see houses sell
Yeah.
with no increase in kids.
Yeah.
So it's just strange, I don't know, it's, and this summer, I think it's gonna be telling
Yeah, there's, there's been an uptick the last month in sales, and so there's not be, not be greater than three cents.
Well, and I, well, and I think that they're, they're buying them and they'll move this summer.
As if we were raising the tax, but it doesn't matter how many pennies we take, how we're gonna restructure the debt to
Oh, no, I get that.
I mean, either way, we're staying at the same tax rate.
Yeah, it's just a structure question.
I'm just being ultra careful on the, what we post, more than any
Communicate that well and effectively, that message will come across, and then there you go, like
I think we need to communicate loud and clear, one point, like, one one oh three nine, or whatever, one one oh three seven, whatever we, we're building up, like, we need
That's at the top of it.
We need to put the total, the total out there.
But then it's like the maximum on this side, maximum on this side, this is how these two numbers came together, right? But this is the tax rate.
I guess they could come back instead of, we're pushing it out for our kids to be prepared for it, but
No, it's just, it's structured.
Yeah.
Let's look at it.
Yeah, and, and that's what he was saying earlier, in the grand scheme of things, that somebody that says, oh, over the next thirty years, then you're gonna, you're kicking that one.
No, but it takes into account no restructuring of debt, no restructuring of loans, it takes, and, and, but that's exactly what you said earlier, that's why we're sitting in these chairs.
Yeah, that's all right.
They, they made it, they put us here to understand that you do the right thing, so uh, I, just so y'all know, I'm, I'm, I'm up there with everybody else, I just wanted to be super careful on the posting.
So Ginger, probably the six to nine range.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
We have another workshop.
That?
Y'all ready?
Yeah.
And that's Okay.
All right, so do we wanna take a quick restroom break? Does anyone need to go to the restroom? Yeah, do you wanna take five minutes, and then we come back for the next one?
Okay.